Lord, we thank you. We thank you for your goodness. We thank you for your kindness. We thank you, Lord, for the United States of America. We thank you for the freedom we have here that we can do things like this. And, uh, Lord, we just pray your hand upon Atlanta and this whole community and Riley and the county, Lord. Uh, we pray you would work, Lord, that your will would be done. We pray your hand upon this debate. We pray you'd help those speaking, Lord. We pray you'd help them to be able to say the things they want to say, and we commit this time to you, Lord. Uh, we know you are sovereign, and we just commit this to you. We thank you, Jesus, for what you've done for us, in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right, I wanna, I want to, uh, welcome everyone. I'm excited to hear what our two candidates have to say. We have Melissa Ward and Don Edwards here. If you could give them a round of applause for coming in. So, the basic structure of the debate, um, is gonna be, we're gonna have an introduction, and we're gonna also have an opening statement and rebuttal from both of the candidates. And I have a list of questions here, some from myself and some from some people on Facebook that are combined, like different questions they had. Um, after that, after those several questions, then we'll have questions from the audience. Any questions that you guys have, you can come up here and say them too. Um, and, uh, yeah, that's pretty much it. So I'd like to get started, um, with an introduction from both Melissa and Don. And you guys really can't see the timer from here too well. I know we don't have to worry about that too much, I don't think. Um, but I was gonna say thirty seconds, Melissa, forty-five seconds. Just go ahead and introduce yourself and give an introduction to everybody here, who you are.
Hi, I'm Melissa Mae Ward, and, you know, the other day I was thinking, what am I doing this for? I'm sixty-seven years old, I'm retired. This is crazy. But I welcomed into this community as I drove in here and as I moved over here, everybody was kind to me, so I decided to run for some, run for this. Um, so that's why I'm doing this, um, for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. And now, Don, your turn.
Yeah, I'm Don Edwards. I've lived here most of my life. Uh, I've always been, um, interested in county government. I started out military in seventy-one, seventy-two, and I wasn't out of the service, uh, more than a week, and I got a job with the sheriff's department. And I was there for twenty-two, twenty-eight and a half years. I retired, went to Iraq for a year and a half training in police. Come back and I run for sheriff, and I got sheriff, and I was a two-term sheriff. Uh, during that time, I was, uh, many associations. I was Lions Club, American Legion, Fraternal Order of Eagles, Masonic Lodge, uh, was township supervisor for eight years, and Atlanta School Board for eight years. Like I said, I, I enjoy what I do. Uh, I've, uh, I've been with the county so long that when I became a commissioner, I knew a lot about it. So...
I'm sorry, we're, I'll, I'll cut you short there, if you don't mind. We're gonna go ahead and ask a lot of questions.
Oh, okay. I'm done.
All right, so this one, you will have a lot more time. I'm trying to keep this to like an hour, hour and a half or so. Um, I'm gonna set the timer here for five minutes, and, uh, Melissa, we'll start with you again, just an opening statement. Um, really talk about whatever you want, different issues, things you wanna say, you know, five minutes. So, Melissa, you start.
Wow, five minutes. Okay, as I said, I thought this was kinda crazy, and I'm getting beat back from the mic. Um, okay, better.
Hold it, hold it forward, wait, that's, yeah, I don't know whether the volume is still...
Hold it like this? Is that okay?
That's good.
All right. So I've been an advocate all my life. I've actually was raised with a brother that had muscular dystrophy, and I've always been an advocate, always, um, for the underdog, for people that can't do for themselves. I've also had a passion for the veterans. I had family members with the veterans, have lost family members and, because of the wars. I've always been a pioneer, and I developed a program out in California for my brothers that were in a ventilator hospital, and they were just basically in there to die. It was costing a million dollars for them to have them in there. So I got them out, got them into their own apartment, and saved the state of California over six-hundred thousand dollars for eighteen years on one, and twenty-two years for the other one. In the meantime, they had a beautiful life, even though they were on ventilators. But you know what? They, they had a beautiful life. I, I actually honor them for that, because they never gave up on me. They always knew, that can't was not part of my vocabulary. Nothing's impossible with God. God sent me here for such a time as this. I listen to over a thousand people in this community, and I've been listening to the concerns and the chaotic and the shutdown businesses and all the things that's been going on. The system has not been working. I have pictures back there of nineteen forty-seven, seventy-five years ago. I have also pictures of, um, some of the buildings in this community that has been left to death. Okay? There's a lot of things that's been going on. There's money being mishandled, and I can actually go in and clean it up. Um, I wanna try anyways. I'm here for the community. Ninety-five percent of the people that I've talked to out there do not like what's going on here. They have no hope. I put together a, um, what is called teams, and together, T stands for together, E is for energizing and enthusiastic, A is for action, M is for motivating, and S is for solutions. And with the team, we can work together. That's what I specify out in the community. I'm there for them. I am not here for myself. I'm not ready for myself. Heaven forbid. I could be retired and enjoying my retirement, but I chose to do this for the community. Also, I started a program for special needs called SALT, and it stands for Self-Aктивating, um, Leadership Training. We took special needs that were in their community that could be a leader, and we actually trained them for four days in Miami Beach area, and then we sent them back to their community and also followed up with how they were doing in their own community. Recently, I was in Traverse City because I took over an eight-hundred-and-three mobile home community that was totally a mess. There was drug activity going on. There was, um, there was a lot of human trafficking going on in that area. It was a mess, and it was very, very in the red. Cleaned it up, and within a year. It took me a year, and it was terrible. But it was hard to do. Um, let me know when I'm running out of time here. I love, it, yeah?
A minute and a half.
Okay. I love Atlanta, and when I came over here, my brother was over here, and he passed away. He came to me, and I actually took care of him twenty-four-seven until he passed into heaven, and I was with him, and when I ushered him into the presence of our Lord Jesus Christ. And with that, he told me, "You would love Atlanta. There are a lot of friendly people here. It's a community that you would love." And ever since I drove in, people was waving at me, and since I've been out there communicating and door-knocking within the last two months, I have met so many wonderful people, and together we can do this. I'm there for the children. We're there for the young people instead of them graduating from the school and moving out. Let's do something here. Let's work together for a good community. Thank you.
Melissa, thank you. By the way, uh, because I really don't have a good morning system, if you guys need an extra, like, fifteen, twenty seconds, like, when that goes off, you have, have like fifteen, twenty seconds. Um, but Don, I'll start your five minutes now for your opening statement.
Yeah, like I said earlier, I've been in county government, uh, all my life, or township government. The county government is a little different than township government in the extent that the five county commissioners run county government. Doesn't mean we don't interact with townships. I don't think, I've ever seen a board that did not work with them either letter of support or we had monies to give to them and help them. It's up to them to bring stuff, because they're, they're the hands-on people, one-on-one with the community, the townships. Second layer is the county, and we are, we're more than welcome to have them, to help them. Um, and we have. Um, I've got some stats here. I guess I can probably read now what we've done. Because of the American Resc- American Rescue Plan money, we got one point, I wanna say one-point-seven million, and we've spent maybe about eighty percent of it. But just in, uh, just in Riley Township, we issued, uh, we give out eight, fourteen eight-thousand-dollar grants just in this community for small business. Uh, we gave out, uh, what we call direct pay of five hundred dollars each for the, um, essential workers that work in the gas station, the grocery store, and all these other things that kept our lives a little nicer. They come to work here, even during COVID, and that was a plan that we came up with. To help them, it's five hundred dollars. They worked two hundred hours in a period of time during COVID, and we had thirty of those applied, and they received it. So we, you know, we work with the township. We're, we're not, it's not a hands-on direct, because we've got so much to do in the, in the county. They come to us, and we're a hundred percent supportive. They want whatever they wanna do. You know, and the only thing that's, that's helping us is the American Rescue Plan money. Without that, what I just read to you would not have happened. The counties, we're one of the poorest counties in the state. We don't have a lot of money for, uh, hand out to the, the townships. We can usually barely keep ourselves going to a certain extent. But we're there to help them. If we could help, give them a grant. Uh, the first year I went to the township, I was supervisor, age seven. We had, that water system was in when I took office. The engineer said, "You have to have a water tower for backup systems." He handed that. They're still talking that today. I went to the township, I knew they needed it. I said, "This is the time to apply for a water tower." We've got money, the state, the feds have money, and if we can get that in, it could be a dime out of your pocket or very little to get that in, and that's what the engineer says. If the pumps go down, people live in town are gonna be out of water. So that, that's imperative in my mind. If I was township supervisor, I'd be all over that to get in. But that's, I don't know if they've started it, but that was the first thing I did. Went to them and said, "I don't know what you need. You know, come to us and we'll help you." So we, we do help them that way, but technically, we're county commissioners. We run county government. We hand out, uh, all the sheriff, the treasurer, the clerk. We, they submit budgets, we go over them, and then we, we give them money to run their departments, you know, in an efficient manner, enough to efficiently run their departments. And then, uh, it's, it's county government. We set the rules, policies. The elected heads, the people work for them. They do not work for us. We have control over the administrative assistant, the comptroller, uh, the maintenance staff, uh, the equalization. But all the elected department heads run their own offices. All we basically do is apply money to them and decide how many people they need. I mean, we can, they want six, and we say, "You can do it with three," then they're gonna get the money for three. That's, that's type of decisions we make. So, uh, there've always been a county government. Don't ask me why. I like it. I've run for different things. I enjoyed every one of them. Everyone had a budget. I enjoy working with the budgets. I don't always agree with the, my board members, uh, from Patriots, and, um, just give you one quick. I've been with the county so long that, uh, for, and they, you know, when they get to be a county commissioner, usually the first year, they're like a deer in the headlights. They're learning. I mean, I had a learning curve, and I worked with the county all my life. New people sometimes don't catch on what they need, you know, unless they're, unless they can pick up quicker, but it takes a while, you know, to walk. You know, I know all this stuff. I still ask questions and stuff. Just give you an example that, um...
Don, we're on, we're on time.
Okay.
Okay.
Can you see the time okay from there?
I can't see that much.
We'll try to give you a warning.
Do this. Give one, one minute, tell this.
Like that?
Okay.
Okay, so thank you both for your opening statements. We'll now start again. Melissa going first. Um, with kind of a rebuttal, I know you made some claims in both of your statements. You both get a chance to kind of talk about your, your opinion of what the other candidate said. So Melissa, you'll start us. It's, uh, two minutes for rebuttal.
I would love to. Um, I've actually connected. I'm a nickname connector, because I actually connect people together. And let me tell you about the SALT program that I did. It was countywide. It was actually statewide. It became a program that they have developed in the state. Okay? So it goes way, way further than that. Um, also, I have connected with Lewiston. I've connected with people in Lewiston, people in Hillman, and we are planning on working together, not just for, um, this town, community, because right now, the community that I represent, I've been a guardian for people for many years. I was, um, I, um, a guardian for my brothers, and I was also a guardian for my brother that passed away, and I also was a guardian for the communities that I have been involved in, which goes further than just the township. But I want you to entrust me to be your guardianship for our community, because I will be representing Riley Township to the board, and as we work together, and also Economic Development Committee is a committee that I am really interested in, because I have a business degree, I have my own business, and I'm a senior. So I know and understand what a senior goes through. I know and understand what a police officer goes through, because I have a son that I raised. It is a soon-to-be captain of the Highway Patrol. So we are American, not Americant. So can't's not in my vocabulary, and I learned very quick.
Melissa, thank you. And Don, now your rebuttal.
Yeah, yeah, pretty much. We do work with the community state, to the townships. They come to us, and we assist them any way we can. That's their job. Their job is to come up and help them in things that they want to do. We've always communicated well with all the townships, uh, that they've asked for money. We've had, we had a millage program for gypsy vault that was invasive species. The, uh, Lake Avalon and West of East Twin, they'd come, we'd cost share with them to clean up their lakes. Uh, so we do work with them on a regular basis. Um, I just wanna give you this a little quick, that my experience, it really helps. Uh, I've, I've been in the union, I've been out of the union, and when we had negotiations, they wanted to keep the jail administrator. We don't have any prisoners. Prisoners are all in, you know. I, I didn't think we needed it. The majority of the board said they thought, "Thought you should have it." So he's got a jail administrator. The, uh, Lieutenant Stanley, she does a wonderful job, has did a wonderful job. She's getting ready to retire, which is fine. She makes about fifty thousand dollars plus benefits. The board, we should have said, when she leaves, it's the grandfather clause that they'll revert back to a, uh, just a, uh, jailer position, about thirty thousand, twenty-five thousand. So in the next ten years, you're gonna pay about two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars more than you should, just because the other members of the board didn't listen to me, because I knew that. I knew that, that if they did that, the union don't give up anything unless they hit some for it. That's the way unions work. It's okay. I'm not, I'm not saying anything bad about them. But that's, the things I could bring, uh, bring to the board, things I know, I've lived here all my life. When they bring stuff up, I can say, "Well, this is what's gonna happen if you do this." And that would, unfortunately, it went through, so we're stuck with that fifty thousand dollar position and stuff until such time you negotiate it out. So that's, thank you.
All right, well, thank you guys for your opening statements. Um, just curious, for the audience, how many of you guys are currently not totally set on who you're voting for yet? All right, we've, we've got a few swing voters here. Um, so now we're gonna go ahead with, uh, questions for both of you guys. Um, two minutes each. Um, I'll switch back and forth between who goes first, and then we'll get to the audience questions. So first, um, Don, I'll ask you first, and then Melissa. How do you feel about the way the ARPA money given during COVID was used in the county? And what are a couple of ways you think our county could facilitate new business growth with upcoming ARPA money we will receive? Don, two minutes.
Yeah, um, we did give it out. I, I wasn't...
Your microphone.
Your microphone.
Yeah, we, we did give it out. It wasn't what happened the way we did it. It was, uh, we were the, you know, we are the only county I know of that formed an ARPA committee and passed out money to the services. I don't know any other county that did that. All the other counties, the board of commissioners controlled all that money, and every, like Alpine and, and Oscoto, they're hanging on to their money. They got big projects. So they didn't release any. We did. And that was to help the communities, so, uh, that was a plus. We'll get back to it. The, uh, what I didn't like, we got it together, we took applications, and my thought process was we're gonna find a lot of people that lost money during, uh, the COVID. And it didn't happen. There was only a couple that actually lost money. Most of them did all right. But that wasn't necessarily a criteria to get the money. Uh, we, we sure, we looked at all the, uh, and, you know, just a couple that actually lost money. So we still get the money out. It was, like I told you, what, fourteen? And, um, and there were grants. Uh, look hindsight, I guess we should have called all those people in and interviewed them and see the long-term plans. We had one eight-thousand-dollar grant we gave out. Two days later, the business was sold. So I did not care that, that, we did, that wasn't procedure. It was like first come, first served. I thought I should have been more vetted to have the people come in. We didn't do it, but, uh, anyway, we did pass somebody out, and they all could use it. Okay, but, um, thank you.
And Melissa, you go ahead.
Hold on, sorry.
All right, that one's gonna be okay now. Melissa, you can go ahead.
Like I said, I've talked to over a thousand people in this community, and there are people that are very upset because of the COVID money. Some of them did not get it, and there are some businesses, I know two of them, that were turned down. So I'm not sure where that came from, and I'm not sure what the issues were. I don't know whether they didn't fill out their paperwork right, but they were upset, because they've approached, um, the board before, and there are situations where the vets have actually been discounted, meaning that they have not gotten some of the things that they should, because it's been tabled at the county board, commissioner board meetings. There's a lot of stuff that gets tabled and tabled and tabled instead of being taken care of. So that's all I got to say.
Thanks, Rick. Can I respond to that?
Sure.
I guess you wanna put accusations on. What did we table that was important right now?
I'll give you guys both a chance to do a vote. Here's your question, and then a few questions from the end.
I'm not aware of anything we, that we tabled with the vets. Um, yeah, I know we did ask for a couple things, and part of the board members thought we should put that one-tenth of a million out for a vote to the people, because we, they thought that they should have a right to vote on any tax, which is a tax. Majority thought, after we discussed it, we said, "We're, we're gonna do it. We're supposed to be doing it," and we just did it. We didn't, um, let go through with, uh, referendum or anything. So this year, the patron's gonna get another fifty thousand dollars to help and, uh, to do what they need to do. We got a veteran officer that takes care of that, so it's the board directly doing that. Thank you.
Melissa, your response to that, then we have to move on to some of the other questions.
I'm okay.
Okay, next question. We'll start with you, Melissa. How do you strike a balance between promoting the needs of Atlanta and Riley Township specifically, while also providing for the other townships and Lewiston and Hillman?
I never make a decision until I know the facts. I'm very transparent, and I also want the truth. So if a person comes to me with, um, Riley Township, and it's a concern about the lakes maybe, or about whatever the issue is, we can discuss it. We can also discuss it between the other. Then I also know, I used to be a grant writer many years ago, and I'm always looking to save money. How can we cut corners? How can we, uh, basically do something from a different pot? Instead of taking out and the money being, right now, we're in the red. I do know that we're in the red. Okay? And so part of that problem may be because it's gone to something that maybe, it could have gone to for something else, or we could have gotten some grants. We could have gotten some people putting in for each other.
All right, Don, and you have two minutes, Rick.
Well, I, she said, "We're in the red." The county's not in the red. Okay? We're concerned about our money, our excess money to keep us going for different things, but we're not in the red yet.
And do you have anything to add about balancing, uh, balancing Atlanta's needs and also providing for the other townships, Lewiston, Hillman? What's your, what's your approach in your term?
Township, the five board members work together, and generally speaking, when we get a program going in Atlanta, we try to make that coming by, so there's a program in Hillman, a program in Lewiston, and try to have them all simpler. That, that seems to work if we can do that, but like I said, other than ARPA money, we don't have a lot of excess money to give up. So I don't know, um, what she's talking about. She'd have to go up and look at the budgets and see what, um, what's there available, and I'd, I'd like to know what, ah, she wants to take it out.
Okay, so this question kind of expands on the last one, um, but it's a little different, from a different angle. As a county commissioner, it's important, uh, not just to represent Atlanta and Riley, but also, if I recall correctly, part of our district contains Avery Township, um, and then, of course, Lewiston and Hillman. What are some of the challenges that you've had or you expect Melissa to have going forward? Uh, with the other county commissioners in the county, how do you plan on finding ways to compromise with them to better the entire county while not letting any specific township or town fall behind? And then, uh, I think I said, Melissa first on this one.
Okay, I go back to the word team. Okay? Together, encourage each other, enthusiastic action, motivate each other, and the solutions. I put together a program many years ago, and it was made up of church leaders, pastors, business owners, all the leaders in the community, and it was a big, huge community. It was actually the county. And together, we would meet once a month, and we would discuss what the issues were and how we can work together. I've already met, um, the guy that's running for, um, Lewiston, the guy that's running for Hillman, and we've already met, and we are discussing on how we can work together with the churches, with everyone else involved in our communities, and together, we can work together to make something work.
And Don, your, your two minutes about compromising with the county commissioners.
The commissioners represent their own districts. They do the best for their districts. They work together, and generally speaking, we work things out. I mean, there's, sometimes there's a two, three voter on certain things. That's generally because of county business, not about helping townships. That's usually unanimous decision, help townships, and whatever their needs are. The, the, the county commissioners are the next level. The first level that people should be working with is the townships. That's the grassroots. That's where the people come. That's, if you have any program in the team or whatever, you should be working with them, getting that going, as a board member, with them. It's, it's not the, the board, it's the, the, the first line of defense, so to speak, is the townships. That's the one-on-one. We're the next step to help the townships. Thank you.
Don, we'll start with you for this one. Uh, what are some challenges you've overcome and experienced you've had, not necessarily in office, it could be anytime in your life, uh, that you believe proved that you are the right candidate for county commissioner?
Well, I have the, the... Probably the biggest thing, when I was seven years old, my dad was killed in a car accident. Not his fault. It took him... That kinda, uh, set me back and, and, and I had a lot of difficult feelings with that, but... And my, I grew up in a single-family home, three, two brothers and a mother. We were rich. I had to work my whole life, starting at twelve. I think that in itself gave me the drive to do what I do. I enjoy this type of work, and I try to give it any chance I get. I just enjoy it. Melissa, thank you.
Thank you, Don. And, uh, Melissa, your turn.
I take it back to nineteen eighty-eight, when my brothers were on ventilators. Actually, one was my brother Roger Ward, and the other one, um, we adopted because he didn't have any family. They were both on ventilators, and they wanted to get out of the hospital. They wanted to live on their own. They never had anything like that in the whole state. Everybody told me it was impossible, that they would just be left there to die in a hospital in the vet ward. I said, "No." My brothers believed in me. They said, "Melissa, remember, can't is not in your vocabulary." And I said, "Yeah, I know." I had no idea what I was doing. I had to get doctors. I had to get, um, the state. I had to go to the governor. I had to prove that I could save six-hundred-and-some thousand dollars a year for eighteen years before they would approve it. They first approved twelve-hour shifts, which meant that I had to take care of them for night shift, which I was fine with that. I could suction them. I could get them up out of bed if they needed to or whatever. But the point was, it was an impossible situation as far as everybody else looked, and you know what? We did it. When they moved into their own apartment, it was amazing. It was a celebration of something, not just for them, but for everybody else in the state, and it continues now. That program is still continuing.
Okay, just so you guys know, we're about... Just so you guys know, we're about halfway through the questions here. And then, so if you guys have questions, you're thinking of, get ready. This one, we'll start with you, Melissa. Now, I'll admit, I'm not really familiar with this issue because I just took it from someone on Facebook like an hour ago. But I'm going to ask it anyway. Do you feel that the sheriff department budget is sustainable as it is? Or do you think an increase or a decrease is appropriate? If you're for an increase, where does that come from in the budget? And if you are for a decrease, what is your response to concerns from voters about public safety? Melissa, two minutes.
It's kind of hard for me because I haven't been here when it was before. And I do know that it's been tabled many times at the board meetings. And they've been apparently going to lose three people, three deputies, because they want to go somewhere else where they can get paid more money. To me, I'm not sure where it was before because I haven't looked at the history. I wasn't here. To me personally, because I'm a family member, I have a policeman and I always want to back for the police. The problem is, right now, in the state of Michigan and all over California, all over the United States, they are running a defund the police department, okay? What's going to happen if they try to do that up here? Are they going to defund it in the future? Are they not? How can we keep the deputies that we need? And if anything else goes on where things, more people come into town, is it going to reflect that? So I would say they're not getting paid enough money as of other places they're being paid.
And Don, your thoughts on the sheriff department question?
Number one, first of the year, we received about a half million dollars extra. We transferred our purse to 12 million. The board unanimously authorized 15 positions in the sheriff's department. Since that time, he filled two of them. But two of them, they got a better job. I think they go into Prescott. They got $2 worn out. Of course, they're a richer county and again. My thought process, we have to pay the top average pay of counties that's similar to us. We can't pay Alpine wages. We can't pay Prescott. We can't pay Traverse City. We have to stay in that area and hopefully, once I'm over here. The other thing we do that no other county does, and I'm aware of, they got lifetime healthcare. When they retire, 55 up to 65, right now, they've got a retirement healthcare until 65, and then they get a $200 stipend. Nobody else does that. So you've got to kind of put that in the mix when you've got 15, 20 years in the county. What is that worth to you? I don't know. So, you know, we do have some things. We've got a longevity program. I don't know if any county has a longevity program for all their people and the elected officials. We do. We reinstated that as a perk because we do pay lower than other places. We're trying to bring that up. We've got a study going on right now. And when that could be released here in August, we'll be able to hopefully adjust that and make it right for everyone. Thank you.
All right, Don, we'll start with you on this question. What are some things the county has done for its veterans through villages and other efforts? And what will be done going forward to honor them?
Well, in the past, we have that a lot of money in because we didn't have it. The last two years, we got a $50,000 grant to help veterans. So we're doing a lot more than we did before. We also passed that one-tenth of mil, which will be here by the end of the year, which will go on with that 50. So there should be about $100,000 at least for a couple of years to help veterans. So I know the guy is really good. He interviews him and he does a good job with the vets. Can we take care of all their problems? Absolutely not. But we do the best we can with what we have. Thank you.
Well, actually, I haven't been to a lot of the meetings before March. So I started going to the meetings. And I know that there's been a vet thing that's been coming up, coming up, and it's been tabled and it's been tabled. And I understand from the vets themselves, because I've been talking to a lot of vets, because that's one of my passions, is to make sure they have served us. We need to serve them. And the biggest thing right now is going on, and I heard that this was passed to the legislative lately, that the 60%, that means if you're 60% above disability, that is the 60% level, that your taxes will be waived, okay? And this happens every time. And right now, they're very upset because it has not been done yet. And I'm not sure if what, because I didn't really understand, because I haven't been there to the commission board meetings, of what has been trying to be passed at the board and why it's being tabled or why it's going to have to go into the ballot now. I don't know.
All right. Next question, we're kind of switching topics here. Melissa, we'll start with you. What is your long-term vision for Atlanta and then all of Montmorency County? Think five to 10 years in the future?
Okay. I have had some visions and I've been talking to a lot of people. Of course, they've been giving me ideas and I'm still pouring it in. We are doing a booth at the fair and I'm going to have people come up and see what was, what is right now. I would love to get involved with the Economic Development Committee. And that is part of being a commissioner. And it looks at how can we, because the system apparently in the plan right now has not been working, okay? So there's still a lot of businesses that are sitting, shuttered up, closed down for whatever reason. There's buildings that have asbestos in them. There's, I mean, what are we going to do with it? There's late problems in Atlanta. But throughout the community and throughout, actually, the county, there's other issues that are going on that I've talked to other people in Lewiston and also in Hillman. So I would say development into businesses that are local, all local, not corporate and not outside people coming in and putting their business in here and not even living here, that is not fair to the local people. Also, the vets need to really be taken care of. That is my biggest passion. The young people, the schools, the young people, having trade schools available, either in Hillman or in, because we're going to need it. We're going to need people that have their trade, you know, to learn a trade instead of having to go to college and waste time in college. There's an auto mechanic that used to teach over in Alpine. He's willing, he's retired now. I've already made connections and having art classes in the schools that needs to be available because these young people are asking for that. These are the information that I get out there. I communicate with the community and they hardly ever hear from any of the board members. They have not, they have disench, franchised. They have not been talking to them at all.
Thank you, Melissa. And Don, you can go ahead. Question is, what is your longer-term vision for Atlanta and for the county? So the next five or 10 years?
Well, I definitely agree with Melissa on the business aspect. I would just say that I've lived here all my life. And I've thought about this over the years, what would go in Atlanta? The only thing that ever went in Atlanta since I was in high school is the bars, gas stations, and the grocery store. They do some hiring, but you've got to work it. You can't hire everything else. You've got to work those things to make money. I don't know. I mean, I'd love to have, she keeps talking about shops and like, it's okay to put up arts and crafts and we got one uptown now. I don't think he's doing very good. You can't put a business in unless you've got the clientele coming by the things to keep it going. And I honestly, I don't know what you can put here to get people to come here to buy whatever. I wish I did. I'd probably go every small town in the United States, I'd pick a lot of money. Thank you.
All right. And this question is a similar question, but a little more short-term. How do you plan on making Atlanta and Montmorency County a better place to live in during your upcoming term? What are some of the first things that you're going to be doing in like those first few months? And Melissa, you can start again.
Okay. Like I said, I've been talking to a lot of the community and they've been giving me ideas. I look and see, they used to have a bowling alley. They used to have an arcade. They used to have a community center. And it's already in the works. I already have connected some people and I've been attending. I'm also a member of the Chamber of Commerce. And we've been having meetings about what we can do with that building to make it a community center. I've also been talking with the people from the school because I've attended the school board meetings. I've also attended the Vienna School Board, the Vienna Township meeting. And I plan on going over to Lewiston and attending their meetings. I've already connected with them over there, trying to make sure that some of the stuff that they got going on, maybe we can switch some of the schools, kids going over there if they have a trade center or in Hillman or maybe in Lewiston. We can all work together in this community to make it a better place to live in. And the young people can have something to do instead of leaving town and going away because it's dead.
Don, the question is more short-term for Atlanta and Montmorency County. What are some things you see going on short-term in the next several months for you?
Short-term, our primary job is the county budget. It's over a $5 billion budget. And you have to spend a lot of time on that. Make sure the money's funneled to the right areas and not try to go over things like that. Start to, you know, get back to the issue, what could you bring in here? I mean, maybe she's got something. But the things she said, I've heard for 20 years from the different towns, trade school. I know some of the kids go up to Onaway and get welding class. I know some of the students here, high school students, go to Alpine. They take them over there for vehicle maintenance and stuff. That stuff's already being done. So you're talking about bringing something in. We don't have the infrastructure here to, and the money, because we can't pay up. She could have granted, I'll pay her a way and have you. But what happens, those things are being done, but not right here. Thank you.
Okay. This is the next to last question I have listed here. And Don, we'll start with you. Promoting economic growth and development in and of itself costs a lot of money. So of course, you always have to work on balancing the budget, making sure you're not making promises and then realizing you don't have the money to do it. How do you plan on maintaining a balanced budget while encouraging growth in the county as we are right now, the current clientele, as you said?
Number one, the county budget is to run the county system. If we have extra money, we're more than happy to help whatever. But that's our primary goal, to keep the sheriff going, to keep the herd going, to keep the lights on, to all those things. That's, as a county commissioner, that is my job. If we've got money, we certainly will help the other townships to get this stuff going. The primary job as a county commissioner is to run the county government and do a good job at it. Thank you.
Okay. Actually, I used to be a grant writer again. And I remember writing grants. And it was amazing how much money is actually out there in grants. I also used to know how to cut budgets to the point where everybody was getting what they had coming, not going to some places that have friends or have other issues or different things going on. So without saying anything about that, actually, I would be looking at also, a friend of mine is also the chair of a bigger, much bigger county. And he balanced the budget. And he actually is going to mentor me in how they did it. And they had much, much more money. But I do know that the balanced budget has not been balanced and we are in the red.
Okay. So this is the final question I have. It's kind of a different question for both of you. Personally, I see different demographics, different groups of people in Atlanta, different types of voters. So Melissa, I'll start with you. As a computer technician, I go to a lot of people's houses and there are potential voters in the area. A lot of them are people who've moved up. They've retired and they've moved to Atlanta from Saginaw, Detroit, Grand Rapids, or a nearby suburb. They're not necessarily opposed to growth, but they're also not necessarily intrigued by the prospect of traffic with streets and turning our downtown into another version of something like Gaylord or Alpine since they moved up here to join, to enjoy a slower pace. What are your thoughts on fulfilling the wishes of those kinds of voters?
Thank you for asking me. First of all, I'm a senior. First of all, I am retired. Second of all, I'm retired. So I know what it's like. But I'm also a small-town country girl. And I love Atlanta as a small town. But I've also turned that question around to them. I've talked to many people that are elderly people. And you know what? They agree with me. Instead of looking at a building that is sore to the eyes, that is closed down, that has problems, you've got sewage problems, you've got all these problems with buildings that are just sitting there looking ugly. In order to do something with that building, whether tear it down and put something else up there, and you know, that's what they, and they say, oh, I agree with that. And then I remind them of what they used to have here. They used to have two car dealers. They used to have a bowling alley. They used to have an arcade, a community center. And it was, not that it was hopping, but they were happy then. They remember, they remember these things and they do want it.
And then, Don, my version, the question to you is different because I think there's different types of voters. So my question for you is, I personally know others who are maybe closer to my age or they're in their late teens or they're in their early twenties. And I know COVID is partly to blame for the situation to be worsening. But a lot of them are depressed and disappointed with the lack of opportunity, whether it's jobs, things to do, or even the lacking amount of potential friends in town. For many of them, turning 18 is seen as their opportunity to pack their bags and take their talents elsewhere. What are your thoughts on fulfilling the wishes of those kinds of voters?
Yeah, it's, it's back to money. You know, it's just back to money. And I'm not sure what you could bring in. Like you said, I'm all open for it, to bring in some type of business for kids to work and stuff. But I don't have a clue. Like I said, I'd be rich. But generally, that's kind of what's, it's better. We don't have the infrastructure here to get. We used to have a plant just out west of here, Essex Wire. That was there for years. And not too many kids, but a lot of people worked there. And that closed up many years ago. And after that left, there wasn't much here other than state jobs, county jobs, farm work, a lot of kids, I think, worked on farms in the summer because they need extra work. But I don't know. I don't have an answer. And we can collaborate with anyone. I have no problem with that, to bring in, you know, something. But I don't have any awareness right now of what you could bring in and give them here.
Can I add to that?
Sure. Yeah, Melissa, do you want to respond to that for a minute? And then, Don, if you want to respond.
Yeah. I spoke with the factory people that have about 66 people out there. They have a, less than 10 people short. They have so much job to do out there and they cannot get the staff. They're willing to pay $20 an hour plus full benefits. They've got three shifts out there. They cannot find people to work. So there are jobs available, making good enough money so that you could turn around and actually have a community center, have something that, you know, there really is. There is something for them to do and to make money and in order to put back into the community.
Thank you, Melissa. Don, you want to respond to that?
Oh, I mean, a lot of kids want to do more than just the factory work, putting metal nuts and bolts, things together. I mean, I don't really know my life. I mean, I'd be looking for somebody else, even someplace else. Some kids might be fine with that, working at that place. I don't know.
All right. So that concludes all the questions that I took from the Facebook audience and after myself. So that gives everyone a chance, if anyone wants to come up, go ahead and ask your own question, more than welcome to comment.
I want to ask you a question, and the last question.
Okay.
High-speed internet coming in, the fiber optics within the next four years, will that not impact the youth's job opportunities to stay here and work online?
I think it will. That may be a good question. Well, that may be a good question for you guys. I'd say as a computer tech myself, I think there's going to be more people that will be willing to work remotely and bring their money up here that would maybe work a job where their company's in, you know, downstate or in where their company's in, you know, downstate or in a city and they're working up here. But I'd like to hear Melissa and Don's opinions on that. So the question is, I'll try to make sure it's not, I think you worded it well, but I don't think it's too techy, but the effects of internet being higher speed on potentially people coming up here and working remotely, they bring theirs themselves and they bring their income and the companies from somewhere else. So how do you think that could affect the whole playing field?
I actually was talking about this with a lot of the younger people and some business owners, and they were thinking outside the box, okay? There's a broadband, there's 150 million, there are grants available, federally and state funding for that.
And, Don?
I think that's a great idea. You know, a lot of the companies during COVID, they let it work. I know two or three right now that are up here because of their companies, but they're telling them to come back to work, they want them back in the office, so. But that, I think that's, down the road, that's how it's going to be, which would be great for the area, you know, to live here and just do their work from online, it'd be a nice addition.
You guys want to come out? No, I'd rather just stay here. I don't know, Monmouth County allows ORVs on all county roads. But yet there seems, can you hear me?
Yes.
There seems to be a lack of enforcement. I wonder what's actually responsible for that enforcement, that 25 mile an hour speed limit on all county roads? And if it is the county, since it's county roads, is there funds being put towards the sheriff's department to increase their ability to enforce that?
Well, the answer to your question, all county roads, county roads are open to ORVs, maximums being 25 mile an hour. And we've seen, I think it's around $15,000 to enforce that, which is not a lot of money. And that's, well, and I know that, that's what the state's going to give you. And you usually have one patrol out there at a time to put it out there. And the thing is, you've got to release it around your house, in North Hillman, go to the machine up, come back to your house, they're gone, you can never call them there. It's just, all those things, it's always been an issue with the county.
I'm aware of how it works inside the local services. And I understand about the bowling alley and all that, you're saying the state needs a certain amount of money for that, but since the county is the one that approved that, shouldn't the county be responsible for enforcement and not be depending on state money?
Well, the county approved that because a lot of the businesses in this county approached and says, we need you to open up, this was many years ago by the way. And they said, we need you to open up the roads and help our businesses. Which like the struggle bill didn't matter, and it does. They make a lot of money off the ORVs and the struggle bills.
Yeah, and I love it, I like it. But enforcement should be part of that, you can't say...
But that goes to the business people, that doesn't go to the county.
But the county's the one that's allowing it, so it would be the county's more responsible. I don't understand how they can just advocate their responsibility.
It's funded, you know? But, you know, when you get, but even if we give it more funding, you still got maybe one, two people out there. And I tell you, nine times out of 10, when you call, they're someplace else. We don't have any.
I think we'll probably move on to the next question.
I just have something to say because, don't you remember, Don? At one of the board member meetings, they came up with the guidelines and I guess they didn't correct the guidelines, they didn't write it right. And you guys didn't, you tabled it. You tabled it at a couple meetings.
I can answer. Table was, it was a gentleman that is really into that, did all the workmanship to pass out the pamphlets for the people. What we tabled was, because we wanted to pay with our funds and that was not allowed, that's why it was tabled, for the payment, to get it in the paper. That was the only reason.
So the guidelines were never really printed up right in order to get out to the local businesses so that they can give the guidelines to the people when they come up to do operating?
That's not true. They're all turned out, we passed out.
Okay.
All right. We'll move on to the next question.
You said that you've talked to lots of vets and that they all have some issues. My husband's retired marine, we just met with Mike again this morning for about the fourth time in the last year to get things handled for him. Have you met with Mike at the VA office there at the courthouse? He is fantastic. While we were there today, he got somebody an emergency ride to a doctor's appointment and got a plumber to go out to some disabled homebound vet up on North 33 before any other job. If somebody is a vet and has problems, he's a super resource. I can't understand that there's people in the county that aren't using him. So I just don't know if you've maybe met with him about the programs that are out there and what's going on.
Thank you so much. Yes, I have met with him. And we were actually talking about how we can involve the young people and maybe come up with some kind of way that they can meet with young people and even actually, like a program, something that would be benefit to both. And yeah, we're working on some things and everything. But the part of it that has been a problem is because there's some things that have not been approved and it's been to the board and it's been tabled. And for whatever reason, I know that there's reasons because I didn't understand all the whole thing, because I was, I missed a couple board meetings. So I don't know exactly what happened from that, whether it's going to go on to the ballot. But yes, he does great, he really does.
And the tax exempt is more than 60%. They have to be rated not able to hold a job. And that is not county. That is way more state, nothing we can do about that. Because we fight it every single year and can't get it.
Thank you so much for clarifying that, yes.
So there is a lot more to it. You can be 100% and pay no taxes or 60% or over, but you have to be rated cannot hold a job. So there are some separate issues with that.
Thank you so much for clarifying that.
Don, you have any comments on that too?
Yeah, I don't know what she keeps talking about. She don't have, she don't tell me what to table or what it's about. I mean, we do table stuff, but I don't know anything to table on the veterans, you know, other than that we could not pay, put that in the paper under our funds. We passed the millage, one tenth of a mill, but we're going to give this year addition to our $50,000 we have to help the veterans. You keep saying we didn't do that, we did it, it's done.
All right. Got to go up here with the microphone? I forgot to mention, if you could let us know who your questions were.
It's for both of you. Hi there. Question regarding relationship with state government. You know, as a county commissioner, you have a relationship with your state representative and there are opportunities looking at trying to secure additional funds from the state to bring in the county. We're always talking about budgets, we're seeing increased costs of everything, there's been a lot of federal dollars passed down into the state. So there's always opportunities to look at doing that. There are many counties that are successful in getting additional funds to come into the counties for a variety of things, infrastructure, economic development, all kinds of things. So question for both of you, how do you view your role as a county commissioner to really help leverage and try and get some of those funds into the county?
Dylan, you ready to start?
Yeah, that's good. We have a new position in the county called the Comptroller, which is the HR person slash the budget director. She's also in charge of reviewing or looking into grants for the county, whatever that is. We're looking at a couple now to, because we're only about 60% funded in our return on the account. There's one coming out, doesn't look like we're qualified, but she's up on that, she tells us all the time and she looks into them, she applies for them, or at least calls that we would be qualified. So that is being done.
Well, that's wonderful. I'm glad we do have that. So that way I can work with her and I can also work with the state reps. I do have a way to talk to state reps and when it concerns our county, I want to be able to make sure I have a conversation. I'm always a connector and I connect people together, so I'm glad we do have that.
I think it's important that we look at economic development and education and building businesses in the community, but one of the things I encounter is housing issues. And I don't know if that's a county issue or township issue, but we have some significant problems with lack of housing. So I have people that, veterans and non-veterans alike, who can't find housing when they, you know, they might even have the money, but they still can't find housing. A lot of it's low income issues as well, but is there any kind of plan in place to develop a better ability to buy housing for people here? We don't have the housing, we're not going to be able to fill the jobs. And that's a concern for me too, is that there's just, when I came here a period year ago, I couldn't find a house. It took me going to a friend who hooked me up with somebody who was selling a piece of property that wasn't listed yet. And, you know, I looked for quite a while, even tried to rent and there was nowhere to rent, and I think that's a problem.
Melissa, you want to start?
I can answer that question. Thank you so much. That is a very, very good question. Yesterday, I was out and about doing door knocking again. I've been doing door knocking every day, I probably hit maybe 10 to 20 people a day. And I ran across a person that actually builds apartments. He did go to the board and I don't know if he went to the commissioner board, but he did go to somewhere where he wanted to have an idea about building an apartment complex, a little one, something that would be able to be for people with housing problems. And they turned him down. So what I would do is actually, sorry. What I would do is actually consider that and actually, I already have communication with him and another partner that actually runs another business that they have here. And if that's something that we can look at in economic development, you're right, exactly.
Yeah, I don't even come to our board, I don't know what part you want to, but I don't remember coming to our board asking for anything about what belongs in.
That money that, you don't go up here and ask the microphone? That money that they, what do they tie into that COVID money that they ran?
Like I said, we passed out also small business loans, that was allowed. Some things I can't think right now. We always check with our advisor to make sure it's legal to use those funds or certain things. I know some things have been turned down that they don't qualify under. I'm not sure what your question is.
I guess, Melissa, how do you approach schools? When the schools can get money from COVID money, what stipulations do they put forth to the teachers and the courses and what?
Yeah, we are checking into safe schools. We're going to see if we can use some of that money to harden up the schools so to speak, so that the classrooms in the schools are more hardened, which are going to be harder to get in and some things like that. So we ought to look at if that's possible, to give each of the school district money to make theirs a little more safe and not accessible like other places are.
And also, I guess, how much of the COVID lockdowns, there's a, play the thought over, we're not going to go through another COVID lockdown, what does the county, what can the county do to say, you know, is that something the sheriff has to himself or what?
If I understand your question about we're not going to go through another COVID lockdown, is that the question?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
What if?
Well, that's not entirely true. As far as the judges, they set their own rules to the Supreme Court. If they say their people's not coming to work, they're, they're home. We have no control over the judge's personnel. So, we have control over the county personnel, but not the judge personnel. I mean, we can make our people work every day, you know, the judge, Supreme Court says, I don't want my people working through the next month. It does cause a problem, because if they're not there, they can't do their job. But if the court shuts them down, they shut them down.
If the legislature not take this, words of authority away from the governor, I know it's the state. I just wonder if it's anything at the county level.
No, we fairly help the department guidelines, pretty much. If they say you should wear a mask or you should, you know, work from home, we pretty much go along with them. We don't have to, but we, for safety and stuff, we generally go along with the health department what they say we should be doing.
I have a comment on that. I experienced this when we had shutdown and they wanted to mask the children, mask the children. And we fought, we went to the court, the school board meetings and fought against it, fought against it. The county commissioners voted that there would not be any masking for the whole county, because they can do this, because they're above the health department. They decided not to have the mask mandated in the whole county and it worked. The school went against it and went to a different county and different health department. But what I'm saying this for is because me as a county representative, I will not enforce mandating, period, because it is not healthy and is not, if the health department, if they can prove without a shadow of doubt that we have to be masked and we have to be shut down, we will still look at it and I will still fight for our grassroots rights and our constitutional rights. I am on the constitution and I will make sure that our county goes along with the constitution, not the rhetoric out there.
I'm not sure even what country she's talking about, Michigan or wherever. We generally follow that and the reasoning behind it is if something would happen, if either people weren't, the COVID, they're going to get an attorney and you'll sue us because the state says you should be not having knee hair and you could be lawsuit and you're going to have to find some way to, figure it out.
All right. We got two, you can go ahead and then, Kathy.
Does the county have their second ARPA payment already? The numbers you're talking about, is that both together or do you know?
It's coming in, I'm not sure when we get it, we'll be getting it shortly. And we still got some leftover from this year, we got a second half, I'm not sure when that comes in, but we have, it's going to be probably $700, $800,000 maybe max, but we still have.
We just got our second at Avery Township. And maybe people don't know, but you only have two years to spend that and we can't make it last forever. For the guidelines, it has to be spent or they take it back, so.
It's my understanding, we have to have it committed by 2024.
Yes.
On whatever project. And if you have a commitment, it can keep longer, but it has to be committed by 2024.
So we can't make it go forever and evermore? Melissa, do you want to add to that or next question?
Next question.
You know, they shut down the prison, the jails up here. Are we saving money? I mean, do we still have to heat it and isn't there somebody, some people that still have to be there?
Well, the answer to your question, the jail itself, no. We can shut that down, turn the lights off, we don't have to heat it, drain the pipes back there. But the little vestibule for the overnight stays and stuff, that, you have to heat that because I got to per the sheriff's department when they actually use that, so that portion. But they could do that. We haven't done it yet, but I hope we could do that.
But, yeah, but weren't we making money getting people from Gaylord and Grayland to house them in there?
Well, that's where the history comes in. Many, many, many years ago, we used to pay $50, $60 a day to house prisoners around the northern Michigan. We went as far as Bay City, all the way up to the U of P. The county board of commissioners said we didn't have a jail because they were costing us a lot of money. So they got some grants and stuff, they built the jail. Since that time, there's bed space all over and it's, right now it's like $25 a day to house a prisoner. It's much cheaper for us to send them to Alpena and house them. By doing that, we're saving a half a million dollars a year by using the ARPA jail.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to know, if we were saving or now we're losing, sorry.
Any other questions? All right. So I think that concludes all the questions from the audience. Now, I'd like to have both of you guys, if you have any questions for each other, I want to give you guys an opportunity to at least ask each other one question. So we'll start with Don, if you want to go ahead and ask Melissa a question, we'll give you two minutes for that. And then, right when you're done, Melissa, you can go ahead and ask Don a question, Ken or it doesn't have to be related to the first one. Kenner, it doesn't have to be related to the first question, and then you have two minutes.
Well, if you're never gonna come to commissioners, you ask them to there first and work with the other commissioners to run the county government. Then you'll have plenty of time to talk to them about their team concepts and stuff and get them on board. That may or may not happen based on the people. I mean, they may have a different view on how to do that, so. That may be an issue. I don't know.
Do you want to go ahead and ask Melissa directly?
No, what do you say?
So what is your question exactly?
The, when you get in as county commissioner, you realize your number one job is to run the county government.
Exactly.
Okay, good. All these other programs you want to do, and I'm assuming you're trying to tie the commissioners into that too, on a team concept deal? Okay.
I've been reading a book and I'm also up for a class coming up. And I've also talked to some of the commissioners. And I also have been mentoring by Roger Frye. Roger Frye, right now is in the hospital, by the way, but-
I do know Roger Frye.
Yeah. He's been mentoring me.
Yes, and you can, that's a, that's a good, I'll try that and see what happens. But a lot of times they've got their own, they work, they're their own county government. And these things you're talking about is good, but that, you gotta bring the townships into it. You as a county commissioner, two or three, have to work with the townships.
Exactly. That's why I'm, I've actually been out there talking to over a thousand people in the township. And I've been going to the township meetings. I go to all the township meetings, except for next week I won't be there because I'll be at the fair.
Okay.
Okay, and now, um, now Melissa, do you have a question for Don? And Don, you have two minutes to respond to that.
Actually, no, I do not.
Okay.
And I just got one statement. She made a couple records of the word in the red. That is not true. I suggest she goes talk to her comptroller. She can show her the books and show them, "We are not in the red." I don't know where she got that information, but that she needs to do that to tell people we're in the red, because we're not.
Classic.
Well, I wish I had the records here with me because I would like to know myself. I was only able to get so many statistics. Um, but I would encourage you guys, if you're curious, just to call up the, it's the county comptroller.
Comptroller.
Um, go ahead and call him up and get the answer for yourself on this one.
That would be April Williamson, correct? Is that April Williamson?
Yeah.
Yes, that's her.
Okay.
She'll be right on top of it. We're not, we've talked a few times. In fact, we have our next commission meeting. Apparently, we didn't have a lot on and I told her-
Your microphone.
We have our next meeting and we just have a lot on there. And I told her you're gonna have April, because she comes to our meetings. I said, "We'll have a pre, uh, a pre-budget hearing." Not the budget, but talk about where we're headed, what some of the things we have to look out for. Just a pre, it's done. We're not new to budget yet, but I just thought that would be a good thing to review with all the county commissioners.
What's your fiscal year, or calendar fiscal?
For calendar year, yes.
All right. Well, more people from the audience have questions. We can keep going. But for now, um, we'll start with Melissa and Don. If you guys could both give us a roughly two-minute closing statement and, you know, what you gathered from this debate and what you kind of want to close out with.
And closing, I just want to know that, and I want everyone else to know, the community and in the county, that our voices will ring together. I have been listening to a lot of things and I have been putting them up. And I want you to come to the fair. I do have a booth that I'm gonna have up there with 75 years in standing that I've gotten from the newspaper, some of the archives that they've given me, some pictures from 1947. And I will have that in there. And then I will also have some businesses that what was, when it was doing really good and what it looks like right now, closed down. Okay? The other thing is, can't, is, I want to remind you, can't is not in my vocabulary. And nothing is impossible with God. I want to thank all of you for coming. I want to thank specifically Jake. I mean, this is amazing. When he first told me this, I'm like, I have never done an debate before. I have not been into politics. I am not a politician. I'm for the community. I'm a community member. Um, I have served and it's time for someone who can, you know, and I thank you for serving on the board of commissioner. But I think you've done your time and I think we need some fresh blood in there. There are four people that are running for county commissioner. And, and one for Lewiston, one for Hillman, um, the other one for Hillman, I think. And so there's four of us running. And I want to be able to be your guardianship, be your representative for Brightay Township to go into the county and make a difference in our county.
And Melissa, Don, you can go ahead.
Yeah, I've been there a long time. I'll agree with that. I think my expertise and being there and things I can bring up to new commissioners where it saves a county thousands of dollars, especially when it comes to the union. That, that helps you as a taxpayer pay less. And I've got vast knowledge and have you worked in this county. So I, I'd like to continue to get your report and again, a support on this and thanks for coming too. Um, glad I could say some things that, um, that was bothering me, what I could hear them speak. Thank you.
All right. That concludes everything. I want to thank the audience for coming out. I think a couple people will head it out, but thank you all for coming here. Thank you for all your questions. Thank you, Melissa and Don, for coming out as well. And I hope you all have a good night.
I do have some signs out there. If anybody wants some yard signs. And I also have some pictures back there that I put up, I guess, today. So if you kind of want to look at them and look what the town looked like and-
I don't have a bunch of, uh- I've got some handouts here on my accomplishments and stuff, like my training and-
Okay, now I'm hungry. I have not been able to do anything all day today.
The number of pennies in, in, I think they said a hazel and windmill. With the, with the same, the pennies. And then we're gonna have Hester is a cow. It's a, it's a, it's a mason jar with a cow head because they're having a, you know, that gravy. And that's why we got the cow. And we're gonna put it up there. Okay? And then, and then, um-
You need candy or stuff?
Yeah, yeah. So that you- If it should be done, of course, it's all.
Well, no, no, we would have, when John is going to get that, because then, you know-
Good job. Thank you. Thank you for broadcasting that. I was wondering if I can add you on Facebook, because you have a better, you definitely have a better angle and I don't think your phone guy has one.
No, no. So I will say, I didn't, I didn't do the line.
Oh, it's just a video.
I should have done that, but I didn't think of it. And I thought, I don't want to screw it with the starter before I got it ready. And, but it'll be a really quick-
That'll be perfect. You could-
And we can put it up. I can put it up on Facebook. And you can, or where, Melissa's. I'll put it on Melissa's.
Okay, that works.
And you can get it from there or?
Yeah, why don't you, I will give you my email address.
What?
And you can go ahead and, I can, I'm a tech guy. I can do it from your phone.